You're too excited.
No, I'm just anxious. I'd like to call the May 16th meeting of the North Smithfield School Committee to order at 6:33 PM. But before we begin our formal meeting, I would just like to inform everyone that the executive session and listed on the agenda will be postponed until June. Because I, uh, we're missing two members as you can see, and I think that they should be present for part of the discussion on job performances of our superintendent and our administrators. So as long as everyone knows that, we're set to begin. Roll call, please.
Chair Lombardi is out and he has notified the committee. Mrs. Mayo.
Here.
Mr. Cunnell also has notified the committee, who will not be here. Mrs. Vada.
Here.
Mrs. Barnamode.
Here.
State the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with justice for all.
Following our agenda with a great deal of sadness, we offer our condolences to the family of Doreen Zowski. She taught English for 36 years at the North Smithfield High School, the school from which she graduated, and she was a proud lady Northman. So if you have read her obituary, you know of her legacy. She will be missed, and we send our heartfelt sympathy to Gary and Matt and Shannon and Rachel, as well as her extended family, who also have ties to the North Smithfield School system. May she rest in peace. So we're moving from sadness to a little bit more positive experience, and I'm going to present Dr. Amy Burns, because we have a presentation for the North Smithfield Teacher of the Year.
Hello? Mr. Yaw has worked as a math teacher at North Smithfield High School since 1997, and has served as the math department head for 16 years. Mr. Yaw is a kind and humble man, who is a great listener. He's a brilliant mathematician and a skilled educator. He builds strong relationships with students through clear expectations, thoughtfully crafted lessons, and his dry sense of humor. He made, he motivates students to do their best in ways that are personalized to each learner. Tom spends countless after-school hours assisting students who may be struggling because he cares deeply about the success of all. Mr. Yaw is a consummate professional. His colleagues describe him as a teacher of teachers and the department head of department heads. Coworkers, both new and veteran, seek out his advice, and he guides them with patience and positivity. At meetings, Tom is never the loudest voice at the table, but when he speaks, everyone listens. He's the ultimate team player. He's a member of our leadership team, our school improvement team, and he participates in frequent school and district level planning sessions to discuss strategies to improve instruction and increase growth data and mathematics. I also want to recognize Mr. Yaw for the innovative ways he has provided support to students, particularly in the aftermath of the pandemic. This year, in collaboration with the Assistant Superintendent, Tom initiated virtual math tutoring hours at the high school. So on a weekly basis, he coordinates with his department to offer two hours of online support each weekday evening. If students feel stuck on a problem while they're doing their homework, or if they need some extra support when they're studying for a quiz, they can just click a link and receive this real-time help from one of our amazing teachers. And Mr. Yaw creates the schedule and provides the meeting links each week, which are communicated via Google Classroom and in weekly family newsletters. Students and families have welcomed and appreciated the support. Mr. Yaw is also integral to the implementation of Saturday PSAT and SAT prep sessions, which were held for sophomores and juniors at NSHS from January to April. Tom not only planned the timing and the structure of these sessions, but also personally instructed the math section. So after teaching all week, he greeted students at these Saturday sessions with positivity and praised for their effort and persistence. Mr. Yaw's can-do attitude and approach to teaching, it's an inspiration. In putting together the speech in honor of Tom, several of his coworkers shared their feelings about why he's an outstanding teacher and colleague. And I've tried to incorporate the spirit of their ideas this evening, but I would also like to share a beautiful quote in its entirety. It's from Mr. David Mallor, who has worked with Tom Yaw in the math department for many years. So in describing Tom, he says, "He chooses his words carefully. He proceeds with actions thoughtfully. He allows us all the opportunity to be ourselves. He leads by example, as he never asks us to do anything he wouldn't do himself. He values the group and never makes it about him. He avails his time without reservation and is always available for help. He is overqualified and understated. He listens. Tom respects rigor, as well as the help needed to learn rigorous topics. He's among the first to arrive and the last to leave the building. Rarely does he complain, always will he empathize." So in closing, I think student voice is really important, so I would also like to share a message from one of our students. This is from Mason DeNezha, class of 2023. Mason sent me these words in an email after hearing that Mr. Yaw had been chosen as Teacher of the Year, and he says, "I had Mr. Yaw for both Algebra II and AP Calculus, and he has helped me out tremendously, not only with calculus, but when I needed help with SAT math as well. He's not only a brilliant teacher, but also a kind and supportive mentor. Back in my SAT days, I needed to score at least a 700 on the math section. In order to do that, I needed to get at most 10 questions wrong. I met with Mr. Yaw every other day, whether that was after school or during one of my free periods, to go over any questions that I might have had, and as a result, I ended up with a score of a 710. I also take an online math class, AP Calculus BC. Even though he hasn't taught some of the topics for 20 years, he still helps me get through them if I was struggling. He always encourages me to challenge myself and to pursue my goals. Sometimes I also stop in his room after school just to say hi. He has taught me valuable skills and lessons that I will carry with me for the rest of my life. Mr. Yaw, you are an inspiration to me and to many other students. Thank you for everything you have done for us. You deserve this award more than anyone else." So I think that Mason said it best. Mr. Yaw is truly deserving of this distinction, and it's an honor to work beside him. So Tom, thank you for everything you do for the students and community at North Smithfield High School, and congratulations.
Add a few words? A few words or a few words? No pressure.
I just want to thank everyone, the whole community. It's been an honor to work here and instruct the numerous students that I've had come across my desk throughout the years. It's been a pleasure to work with the staff, both past and present. They're great educators. They work very hard, and it's humbling to be, uh, to be chosen as the Teacher of the Year. Thank you again. I appreciate it.
I was just checking the sheets over there, and it doesn't look like anyone has signed up, unless there's someone on the.
There are no hands raised, so I think we're all set to keep continuing.
Good. Okay. So we're moving on to the consent agenda. Does anyone have any item that they wish to have removed?
Okay. I do. Um, item 4A. Item 6A. And. Item 12.
Okay, before we start this, I just want to shout out to our next Eagle Scout, and there have been a lot of them this year, which is wonderful. Owen Wall there, as a mother of two Eagle Scouts, I know the effort and the time and dedication that goes into obtaining this award, and his accomplishment brings much pride to his family, his troop, and his community. So congratulations to Owen. So now I'm looking for a motion to accept the consent agenda minus 4A, 6A, and number 12. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And none opposed, so the motion passes. So discussion first, we'll start with 4A.
Okay, um, Studio Jay, Jay?
Jay.
Jay, okay. Um, this is for the engineering and the papers, the documents. Do we get reimbursement on this portion?
Good question. Um. I think so. I don't know. I think so. I, you know, but I can't 100% say. It is a right-approved project. So typically, we are eligible for the reimbursements for the engineering design piece as well.
Okay. All right. I was just curious.
Yeah, it's included.
All right. Very good.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay, and we are back to the medical marijuana policy. And thank you for reaching out to the nurses. I actually called two of them. One didn't want to speak with me out of the meeting.
Okay.
The other kind of felt the way I did, but agreed to the discussion you had with them. But I still go back to not feeling we should be doing a policy, and at the same time, I pulled up the law once again. And in the law, it says to develop protocols or procedures.
Correct.
Not policy. I guess my problem with a policy is if we don't cover every little item, somebody's going to come back and say, well, it's not part of your policy.
So the policy, th- there is a section in there that says that school departments have to have a policy, and the policy is to develop the protocols and the procedures. So the policy, and this was prepared by our attorney, because it became a, a state law. Number of districts have, uh, you know, used it, modified it as the template, passed the policy, and then developed the procedures and the protocols. Now, I did at one point send the school committee the, uh, companion procedures and protocols. We did review that with the nurses and with our physician, with Dr. Lee.
Right.
And so they, they were comfortable with the policy piece and the procedures and protocols that are attached to it.
All right. Again, because what I, it's Department of Health screening medical services reporting for school, school health programs, and, um, I think it's, do we have a policy on asthma and carrying their inhalers, or is it a protocol?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head. Uh, we do have policies and protocols and procedures on how medications are administered during the day.
Okay. So can this not fall under that policy? And adhering to the law?
I think, I think it's probably due to the discomfort that you feel that the General Assembly passed this as its own thing, because it does require an additional level of oversight and control than taking Adderall or using the inhaler, because it is a controlled substance.
I, okay. I, I, I won't support it. I'll say that. But, um, yeah, as I read through it again, it just said every school authority must develop protocols or procedures. So I just felt that rather than putting a policy just on medical marijuana, having been on the juvenile hearing board, having parents who questioned, why are the police concerned if my kid is smoking pot while he's driving? I just feel there, by putting this policy, there will be ways to get around it. And I'd rather just adhere to, these are our drug protocols and procedures, and the medical marijuana falls underneath it following law 4.23.1, and there you have all the instructions. Maybe I, that's just how I feel.
Understandable.
There's a committee who can make that decision.
I look upon this something that's come to us from the General Assembly and Rhode Island Department of Health. It's kind of like an umbrella, and underneath that umbrella falls our particular procedures and protocols.
Right.
So I don't particularly have a problem with this as it's written, because I almost feel like we have no control over it. It's something that the Department of Health and the General Assembly have almost required of us.
Yeah, I believe. So, so can you develop protocols and procedures without this policy?
We can develop protocols and procedures for everything, anything, and we do. We have many protocols and procedures that are attached to policies, and then we have general operational protocols and procedures. But it was, again, our attorney and reading the legislation that it required the policy to put in place to the, to support the protocols and procedures that attach to it.
Because it would have to follow, follow under some policy.
Yeah, and, and, and because of the sensitive nature of this being a controlled substance that in some cases is, it's used as a legitimate medical description with tight controls, that the policy gives it more teeth than just a series of rules, protocols, and procedures. And the protocols and procedures that we, we have, again, have been reviewed by our nurses and our physician, and they pretty much come directly from the language of the law itself. So everything is in support of that.
Maybe, maybe I'd be more comfortable if the entire policy just was word for word of what's in the law. Because the signature of the certifying physician, advanced practice nurse, practitioner, or physician assistant, the student's debilitating medical condition, the dose of medical marijuana, minimum interval between dosage and possible side effects to be included in the student's IHCP, that's what the law says.
Right, and.
It's not the policy, they've just kind of shrunk it down and picked out the major points. And I just wish it just fell under our drug policy or our medication policy and not just be about getting a card and getting medical marijuana. I'm, I'm just not comfortable with it.
Okay, so any more discussion on that? I think what we'll do is we'll vote on these separately.
Okay. Then my last one was WB Mason for ordering 150 desks.
Right.
The 5,000, whatever, I don't have it in front of me for assembly. I know last meeting we ordered tables that need to be assembled, and we had a labor cost to that. Is there any of this that we could have our pathways class, that kids could assemble tables? I mean, they're not going to assemble 150 desks.
These, these will most likely begin after they've already gone home.
Okay, but in the future.
What we had done in the past, and we didn't do it, well, COVID changed it, is that in the past, we had hired a team of high school students to do things like this. All right, but it, that's something that we got away from during COVID, but I can certainly see about bringing that back, because it was a nice summer job for a group of high school students, and they worked hard, and I, I have to tell you, our custodians loved having that, because they were hauling a lot of stuff.
Well, I mean.
You know, and assembling things. And so, yes, I, I actually would like to get back to that. We used to have a, a budget item for high school students.
Well, I think rather than corporate America getting
I agree.
that money, if we have young guys, girls, whoever it may be, willing to do this, let's have it done in-house. That's it.
Thank you. Well, I could start with 4A, so I'm looking for approval of Studio.
Jay.
Jay, thank you. Studio Jay's proposal to replace the North Smithfield Elementary School generator.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes.
Ma'am, I'd say I, I, I feel comfortable in none of these, because I did review the material ahead of time. Cast, what else was taken out of?
Yes, the next one is 6A, the medical marijuana policy.
Okay.
And then the last one is 12, approval of the middle school desks.
Again, I feel comfortable in any because of my review of the materials ahead of time, especially the medical marijuana one. And I do want to just mention, if I could, I appreciate, um, Terry's comments on it and the concerns, I really do, but I'm going to go with favorite, because I think that on balance, it's better to have the policy in place and amended if we need to than have. I can wonder if I'm not having something in place.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to accept the North Smithfield Public Schools Administration of Medical Marijuana Policy. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye. No.
The motion passes, we agree with one. Thank you. And then moving forward, I'm not quite sure what to do about 12. Um, I don't know. Are we going to, have students have to put it together, or, um, I guess this is just the approval of the quote, basically. Okay.
Unfortunately, not this one.
Okay.
No, I, I would think in the future.
But.
But in the future, rather.
I want to reinstate that.
Oh, that money going out left.
All right. So I'm looking for an approval of the WB Mason quote for the new North Smithfield Middle School desks.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. I, sorry, I forgot to vote on that. Aye.
You're juggling a lot. It's okay.
Okay, moving on to second, third, fourth.
Yeah. All I want to do is touch on a, a couple of changes, a couple of items. A couple of months ago, you did approve the Smithfield School calendar for next year. We're going to have to make some adjustments to it, but the main thing is it, for all the parents who are looking at the school vacations, to plan their vacations, none of that's changing. All right, so it really is just logistical things. There, there's a, a couple of things happening. One, uh, I have put in a request to the town, and it went up to the State Board of Canvassers to not close the schools down on the two election days in September and November. There, district, local elections, there's usually not a very large turnout, and I've requested if the polling station could be at town hall, and we don't use NSES and have to close our schools. That, if we did that, that would just add extra days at the end of the year in June. Now, there is a possibility, and what some districts do during election days is that, yes, they'd have to close the school for students, but they would do professional development days for teachers. Unfortunately, these two election days are too close to the beginning of the year. They're really not useful for us. We have put in the calendar our professional days, uh, one in late November, and the other one, off, off the top of my head, I forgot what it was, February, to coincide with the results of, uh, data assessments for students, and we have our teachers go through the student data and performance and find strengths and weaknesses, and, uh, it informs intervention and, and changes of instruction. So we would like to hold our two professional days, the days that we actually could use them. Uh, so again, I put in that request so that NSES wouldn't be a polling station for those two election days at the beginning of the year, and I'm just waiting on the result. So, uh, that may bring a change to the school calendar if we are not approved our request. The other change is there's, there's a number of regulations from the Department of Ed regarding the school year and half-days, exam days, and apparently a number of districts have been playing pretty fast and loose with half-days. So we've been pretty good. We're not one of those districts. But with some of the changes, uh, we do have on the calendar, we put out the projected graduation date for the high school. That's most likely going to have to change, because there are regulations tied to seniors have to have exactly 171 days of school, and then the exams follow that. Right, so it becomes very problematic, because when we set the graduation date, we want to bring it in as soon as possible. We have snow days, we have other things. It, it now runs up into graduation, the 171 days, the half-days for exams. So the high school is working through that right now and how they handle that. And they, they, they have some plans in place, so that, that will be reflected in, in the calendar. The other thing is that we are limited for the amount of half-days we can use for midterm and final exams, which we're usually fine with that. But we do run a half-day for senior project. That is not allowed under the regulations, so we may have to do something with the way we do exams, because we do not want to give up senior project and have teachers available and community come in to see the amazing work the students have done. So on next year's scheduled calendar, there is a day for senior project. I don't know if the date's going to change, but we. I don't know if the date's going to change, but we, we want to do what we can to preserve senior project. Another practice that we had is that for parent-teacher conferences. We would, what we had done is do a half day. So that parents who work in the evening can come to school during the daytime. And then the teachers would be there in the evening for the regular schedule. Well, we cannot do half days for parent-teacher conferences. So again, that is also going to be reflected in the calendar. That's something right now, the, the teacher union is looking at, and we're, we're, we're looking through an MOA and how to handle that, and what that's going to look like. So anyway, I just wanted to give you a heads up that there are some changes that are coming up to the calendar based on elections and regulations and so on. The other thing that I wanted to bring up for a change for next year is that we need to adjust the school start and end times. So we have had for the past several years, common planning time, 45 minutes before school. The teachers would come in and they would have team meetings, departmental meetings, professional development. But the, uh. It was voted on and decided, uh, the MOA that was, uh, affording common planning time is no longer going to be in place next year. So what that means is that we're going to move, we're going to increase the time in the day for instruction with the students. Because we no longer have that common planning time, so that, that time is now being turned back into student instructional time. Which means schools are going to start a bit earlier, they're going to end around the same time. So. What we're looking at, oh, it won't let me minimize this while I'm recording. I learned something horrible with Zoom right now. So essentially, the middle school and high school, the student day starts at 7:55 this year. It's going to be, it's going to start at 7:30 next year. The end day, the end time is still the same, 2:20, um, but. The, uh, the students will be coming in early next year, and let me tell you, we're just going back to the pre. Pre-common planning time, pre-COVID school times, so it, it, it's not unusual what we're shifting back to. This is where we used to be before the common planning time. And we'll notify and we'll, we'll send everything out to the, uh, community, uh, I wanted to preview it with you first. NSES, instead of the student day starting at 8:45, it's going to start at 8:30. But it's going to end just five minutes later than it does right now. So not much of a shift. One of the things that we found is that. The earlier start time actually is conducive to many more parents and, you know, getting the kids to school as they head onto work. So it. And what, what this, this schedule does is also gives a little bit more cushion time for the bus runs. Because we, previously, we had 50, 55 minutes between elementary and secondary. And some of the buses, I don't want to say that. I don't want the buses to break land speed records to get the kids to school, you know, a little bit more comfort, a little bit more time would be good, it's nothing to change. Transportation or contract. We also had a number of buses, uh, which would be getting in, especially after the secondary run, getting to the elementary kind of right up against the bell. So again, we're, we're, we're giving them, uh, at the, at the, the. An extra five or 10 minutes just to get the kids there. A little slower, especially the elementary kids, because they have to do the, the monitors have to do that, walk around on the buses, so those, those routes take a bit longer. So anyway, that's, just wanted to give you the go, uh, a preview of the, some of the changes for the start time. Ultimately, be safer for the buses, and it's also more instructional time in class. Those professional days, uh, we added three professional days back into the calendar, and that's, that's the one that we're talking about. Two of them we're talking about, you know, coinciding or, or running up against the election days, so. Yeah, yes.
Um. With the busing, do we run into problems with buses for the athletic programs?
So where, there's a couple of, yes, we do, and we've been working with the bus company to resolve that. Some of the things have to do with. This, this ongoing shortage of drivers, and it's not just with our company, it's with every company, and sometimes. Sometimes buses have to be doubled up, we hate that, where a run is doubled, but we actually have more buses running for the secondary. There's more sec- secondary students taking the bus than there are elementary. And what we're trying to secure is at least a couple of the buses, let's get some of the early teens out. Because they're not doing the elementary, that's right.
Right, because the high school's done at 2:20.
Yes.
And if they're not getting a bus here till 4:00.
So, so the, 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 the challenge of what we're, again, we're working with the bus companies, to at least get two or three buses to get those early teens out. And then after the elementary run, they circle back to the high school and pick up the rest of the teams.
Any other questions? So what happens to common planning?
It's gone. It's now three PD days. Thus ends my report.
And, and any other questions? Thank you very much. Moving on to our international section.
I just want to do, I think Marissa, I don't know if she's still on, but I just want to thank Marissa and Victoria. For the service with North Smithfield, and I wish them absolutely the best in their new positions and endeavors.
Absolutely, I think we all can echo that, thank you. Home business, any updates?
Nothing on the FY23 budget, we're just trying to hold out the O's and get ready for the audit. FY24, I just wanted to mention that I reached out to the town today, June 12th, they'll be having their public hearing on Monday. And June 26th, they'll be, um, meeting to set the budget. I had asked, um, Fatima to hold the school committee, or a short meeting, maybe on June 29th, Thursday. To, uh, just adopt our budget and present the changes. Maybe approve some.
So public hearing is June 12th, um, the 26th, we're setting the budget, and the 29th, we finalize our budget. Thank you. Anything else?
We'll be it.
Under new business, non-renewal and termination.
Oh. Yeah, I'm sorry. It's the worst, it is absolutely the worst, and so, uh, yes. You have, the list has been submitted to you, and the hope is, is that as soon as possible, we can turn around and start the recalls. But again, it's, we follow the contract, it's a process, we, it's an unfortunate process we have to go through every year.
It's also, in my opinion, the most difficult vote that we ever have to take.
Absolutely, it's terrible.
Just awful. So I'm looking for a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation for non-renewal or termination of contracts.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes.
Ma'am, sure, just to put out again, I'd just add one comment on that, I mean, it, it, it's a difficult, but again, this is really mandated by the state law requirements, you know? So it's not like, just to clarify, it's not something that we choose to do as much as it's just the state, we're implementing one of the state law mandates.
That's a good point.
So, not to pass, not to pass the buck, but it's just that we'd be, we didn't do it, yeah, we have.
It's still sad.
I'm not, yeah, I didn't mean to say it's not.
I know, I, I understand what you're saying, and I think that's a very good point to be made clear.
And I, I, and I remember my years, you know, way back when I was teaching, and at the beginning, and every year getting that pink slip. And just wondering, am I coming back, and hoping I do, and, but just having to let the process play out.
Uh, is there anything else?
There is nothing else.
Well, and since, Bill, we're having no executive session, because originally we thought that we didn't need to appear. And that's such an important executive session, we thought we should push it off to June.
I have, I just was tired of the work, and I just couldn't get there sooner than I did.
It's fine, so, so I think that's it, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.